Dave, Dave Publo.
Hi, my name is Dave Publo. I'm with United for Action and I'm a resident of Brooklyn, New York. I believe a number of the people in this audience have a copy of my testimony, and since my one voice is too small, I would welcome them to join in. Governor Cuomo, DEC, we are here today to stop hydro fracking in New York. We are here today to demand that you uphold the public trust. We speak for many. The SGEIS process is a sham. The mission of the DEC is written: to conserve, improve, and protect New York's natural resources and environment, and to prevent, abate, and control water, land, and air pollution in order to enhance the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the state and their overall economic and social well-being. The DEC violates its own charter by allowing fracking at all. Hydro fracking spreads toxins into our air, water, and soil. Hydro fracking enriches gas companies but ruins the health, economy, and future of the people. Hydro fracking is a suicide pill for America. We will not allow this to happen. We will not allow this dangerous industry to poison us. We will not allow big money to hijack our democracy. We will not allow you to ignore the facts to advance the interests of the few. You have forced us to take this stand. The DEC claims it will protect New York City's watershed, but we know the DEC will not protect any part of New York State. The DEC has ignored the public health impacts of drilling. The DEC has not measured the cumulative impact of drilling. The DEC has issued regulations before public comment on the draft EIS has even been completed. The DEC allows toxic waste in open pits, spreading volatile toxins for hundreds of miles. The DEC allows toxic wastewater to be spread on New York roads. The DEC leaves New York's floodplains, farmland, and towns vulnerable. It ignores all signs of earthquakes and extreme weather. The DEC has not banned any toxic chemicals from the fracking process. The DEC knows that there is no safe way to dispose of fracking waste. The DEC allows the gas industry itself to monitor its own waste disposal despite a history of abuse. The DEC is understaffed and cannot manage an unmanageable industry. We will not allow you to ignore the lethal reality of what has happened everywhere fracking has been done. Governor Cuomo, we demand that you ban fracking in New York State. Governor Cuomo, if you move to allow fracking in New York State, we will remove you from elected office. Governor Cuomo, DEC, if you continue on this path, we will take direct action and we will shut you down.
People, there are other speakers. You're eating into their time. Ms. Raydow.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. Facts require that we change the dialogue on gas drilling. My name is Elizabeth Raydow. I am an attorney. My research on gas leases and mortgages appears as the current cover story in the New York State Car Association Journal Magazine. Homeowners and Gas Drilling Leases, Who or Bus, www.nysba.org. I chair the Hydraulic Fracturing Committee for the League of Women Voters of New York State. I speak today on my own behalf. Governor Cuomo is correct to say we want the facts. This is appropriate. In my law practice, I work with clients to finance and construct projects. This includes gathering facts and managing risk to prevent things from going wrong. When I think of New York State and New Yorkers as my client, I become concerned. The risk management aspect of the gas drilling and who pays for the risks does not appear to be part of the conversation. It should be. New York government must demonstrate to all state taxpayers that it has grasped and addressed the potential liabilities for this expensive and risky drilling process. As with any profit-seeking enterprise, the gas industry should be fully responsible and able to pay for their own operations and the damage it causes. Unless proven otherwise by the industry, the facts indicate they won't or can't pay these costs. If they don't pay the bill, will it become a taxpayer responsibility? Here are some facts. The pre-printed gas leases homeowners signed do not contain an insurance clause making the gas companies responsible for the drilling activity. The leases are silent. Drilling activity is not covered by homeowner's insurance. Gas company public disclosure documents filed with the FCC list the risks of gas drilling to include well blowouts, craterings, explosions, pipe failures, fire, uncontrollable flows of natural gas, or well fluids and other environmental hazards. The same disclosure documents state there is inherent risk of incurring significant environmental costs and liabilities due to generation, handling, and disposal of the materials, including the methane gas and the fracking waste. The disclosure documents state these significant liabilities are not fully insured. Climate change makes matters worse. Climate change ushers in more frequent extreme weather such as Hurricane Irene. The damage can be devastating, as we all know. Gas companies are not fully insured for the damage to drilling operations from hurricanes and tropical storms. This insurance is becoming more expensive and it covers less. There is no indication the gas companies have established a cash reserve fund to pay for the remediation expenses their insurance does not cover. Facts require that we change the dialogue on gas drilling to grasp the expense side too before DEC grants drilling permits. Otherwise, we New Yorkers should be prepared for an increase in our taxes to pay for the cleanup. I invite you and everyone here to come to a program on December 7th at 1 o'clock at Hayes Law School. Thank you.
Jessica Roth. I'll call the following speakers. If you haven't spoken, please vacate the front row because I will call the next speakers to sit there. Jessica Roth. Winona Hodger. Mary Ann Solomon. Donna Stein. Alice Zins. Anne Lazarus. Callan Riffle. Craig Michaels. Robert Jereski. And Marcellus... That was right. Marcellus Martha. Okay, Dominic Lee.
Good afternoon. My name is Donna Lee and I'm speaking on behalf of Assemblymember Daniel O'Donnell. Assemblymember O'Donnell is in Albany this afternoon. He's attending a legislative ethics committee meeting. I'll be delivering his testimony. I said I'll be delivering his testimony today. It's from Assemblymember Daniel O'Donnell. Good afternoon. My name is Daniel O'Donnell and I'm a member of the New York State Assembly, elected to represent the 69th district, which includes Manhattan Valley, Morningside Heights, and portions of West Harlem and the Upper West Side of Manhattan. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today and express my concern regarding hydraulic fracturing in New York State. As the commissioners may know, I am a strong proponent of protecting our environment, health, and water supply. I'm a member of the Environmental Conservation Committee and the author or co-sponsor of multiple laws that would regulate and suspend hydraulic fracturing. Hydraulic fracturing simply poses two greater risks to the health and lives of the citizens of New York and must not be allowed until they are convinced beyond any reasonable doubt that it can be done safely. This standard has not been met. Since the New York State Assembly's Environmental Conservation Committee held a public hearing on October 6th, I have urged our legislators to protect us from the dangers of hydro fracking at every turn. On November 7th, I wrote to Governor Cuomo urging him to allow for the completion of a congressionally mandated review of hydraulic fracturing by the Environmental Protection Committee. Just yesterday, November 29th, I wrote to the Army Corps of Engineers imploring Colonel Christopher Larson to vote against the adoption of the draft natural gas regulations as currently written by the Delaware River Basin Commission. These regulations would permit hydraulic fracturing in the Delaware River Basin, land that provides drinking water to over 9 million New Yorkers. The potential for damage from hydraulic fracturing is too great to allow the process in New York State. There are too many questions that must be answered, too many competing claims in terms of scientific fact, economic projections. In the end, we need only look to the damage hydraulic fracturing has caused in Pennsylvania, other parts of our country, and locations around the world to know that we cannot and should not allow hydraulic fracturing to take place without a complete knowledge of any potential ramifications. Thank you.
Ibrahim Khan.
Good afternoon. My name is Ibrahim Khan. I'm here on behalf of New York State Senator Adriano Espaillat, who represents the Upper West Side, northern Manhattan, and Riverdale in the New York State Senate. He also serves on the Senate Environmental Conservation Committee. Here is an excerpt of his testimony. Nothing is more important than the health and safety of New Yorkers, and we cannot ensure a New Yorker's health without protecting the air we breathe, the water we drink, and the land we all rely on. That is why it is so crucial that we carefully scrutinize attempts to drill for gas in New York. Whether or not we allow hydro fracking represents one of the most important public policy questions our state has ever dealt with. Hydro fracking would require billions of gallons of water that is already in increasingly high demand. Countless acres of pristine land would face destruction. Hazardous chemicals would be pumped beneath the earth's surface right alongside water cables from which millions of New Yorkers draw their drinking water, releasing dangerous pollutants into the air, threatening endless on unprecedented scales and rolling back decades of progress made under the Clean Water Act and other environmental measures. While the opponents of hydro fracking have outlined ambitious economic projections and weigh the prospects of new revenue in front of a state that is facing deep budget deficits, there has been no real accounting for what hydro fracking would cost New York State. From the cost of implementing regulatory policies to building and maintaining infrastructures such as roads and bridges used for transport to this steep price of potential accidents, the economic benefits of hydro fracking are highly suspect. Even if the natural gas industry were to demonstrate that the process would yield a net financial gain in the short term, what about the long-term costs? What price are we willing to put on the health of New Yorkers? What is the cost of our air being dirtier, our water filled with toxins, and our land irrevocably damaged? To say nothing of asthmatic children and families afraid to turn on the tap of their kitchen. How much gas must be extracted to make these results worthwhile? Simply put, even if the economic benefits of hydro fracking, suspect though they may be, are taken at face value, hydro fracking would still be morally bankrupt. That is why so many New Yorkers, from elected officials to environmental advocates to everyday citizens, are lining up against hydro fracking and sending a strong message. There's too much risk and too little information available to allow hydro fracking to go on in New York State. The Department of Environmental Conservation does not have the staff, budget, or indoor infrastructure to monitor a project of this magnitude. The agency would be overwhelmed by the lack of a settled approach to deal with drilling at thousands of wells and safe extraction and disposal of the tremendous quantity of tainted water. Furthermore, thanks to the natural gas industry's evasive practices, including basic disclosure failures, we don't even know the chemicals that will be used in this new and largely intensive process. How can we expect to have any meaningful regulation without this information? Given the myriad dangers posed by hydro fracking, lack of accountability, and available information, and the value we place on clean water and air, we must not allow hydro fracking to move forward in New York State.
Jessica Roth.
Hi, my name is Jessica Roth. I'm a fourth-generation Brooklynite and I spent every summer of my childhood upstate in Marcellus shale country, otherwise known as Catskills. I have a few critical points to make today, but have no fear. I plan to use my entire allotted huge amount of time, three minutes, to comment on our entire lives and our future here, so I'll use all that time. My first point: there is no safe way to frac. Let me repeat that. There is no safe way to frac. These regulations are not even worth talking about. We can't go forward from here. That's all there is to say. So, the evidence is pouring in from all over the country. I'm not really sure why we're not paying attention yet. There's contaminated water, land, food, people, animals, air. There's nothing positive happening here. If we look at Dimmock, Pennsylvania, 15 whole families have their water completely contaminated courtesy of Cabot Oil. They have no way to drink their water. They can't bathe in it. They can't use it for anything. They've been being provided with potable drinking water, which is part of their lease conditions that they were granted by Cabot Oil, that they would be restored to drinkable water. Now, ironically, today, they are stopping delivering clean water. PA, the DEP of Pennsylvania, and the governor have decided that's okay. Governor Cuomo, I urge you to see this as the cautionary tale that it is. We don't want another Dimmock. Also, the SGEIS is a huge problem, right? We all know that it's barely even starting to focus on any of the issues that we need. The process has failed. The SGEIS has failed. The EIS is supposed to determine environmental impacts of whatever it's going to assess. Here, we're talking about a process that involves hundreds of toxins, carcinogens, and radioactive materials. There is no public health impact statement or study. How could there possibly be an environmental impact study without it? This is a public health issue. It's a civil rights issue. It's a human rights issue. We have to talk about these things. And, an environmental impact statement is supposed to be the beginning stages. You do the study, you find out the problems, you then mitigate or you avoid doing them. How on earth is that possible when we're moving forward with regulations at the same time as an EIS? Fundamental flaw in this problem is that we can't do those. You can't look at a problem, assess it, and regulate it if you're doing them at the same time. These both have to be stopped. This process is a sham. Governor Cuomo, it's a breach of your responsibility to the people of New York State. Finally, I want to say, every time I talk about the work I do in this movement, and make no mistake, it is a growing movement and we will win. People come up and they thank me. They say, "This is great. I'm so glad somebody's out there doing what I can't do." So I want you to look at me and every other person in this room, and I want you to see firefighters, and doctors, and lawyers, and nurses, and small business owners, and all of the people who don't have the time, don't have the money, don't have the resources to do what I have the flexibility to do. We are with thousands of other people. They're behind us. They are with us. And we are going to keep growing and we are going to keep coming back. DEC, Governor Cuomo, it's your responsibility to protect the people of New York State, not the gas industry, and we will be here until you do.
I'm Winona Howard of Food and Water Watch, and we all know in this room that the gas industry and its political allies have used a very cynical ploy to sell fracking in the economically devastated rural parts of this state. Gas is going to magically solve the problems caused by laissez-faire economics brought to us by the same Wall Street interests that are going to benefit from fracking. We at Food and Water Watch closely examined the DEC's socio-economic report. And shame on you for putting out a misleading report with inexcusable errors, misleading information, just so that Governor Cuomo can justify fracking. Your analysis concludes that an average shale gas development scenario will bring about 54,000 jobs. But like so much, the devil is in the details, and if you don't look at the fine print, a footnote, you wouldn't know that that's over 30 years. It counts out-of-state workers who have gas industry experience who moved to New York. It assumes an unrealistic pace of drilling. 20,000 wells in three counties, which would make them more like Houston than upstate New York. It fails to account for the negative impacts that drilling and fracking would have on employment in other industries. The analysis overestimates production jobs by assuming that shale gas wells will produce like they experience in Pennsylvania over only a couple of years. It doesn't take into account a 2011 USGS report that reduced the estimated amount of recoverable gas by 80%. It doesn't take into account the US Securities and Exchange Commission investigation about whether shale gas companies have overstated well productivity. The analysis misapplies an economic multiplier effect. And based on the New York analysis, we estimate that in the first year, the average shale gas development scenario would amount to 195 new oil and gas jobs. That is 1/40 of 1% of the jobs needed for the 756,000 unemployed New Yorkers. What we really need is a strategy that looks at real economic development in the rural areas of the state. Industrializing New York's rural farmland isn't in the best interest of the people of the state. New York's leaders should be pursuing ways for farmers to make a living from producing food. The extractive industries are living in a kind of bad agriculture policies. And the leaders of the state need to create a real plan for economic development based on sustainable farming and dairy operations, not extractive industry. Bad fracking now.
The prohibited drilling areas and setbacks from New York City and New York State's drinking water in the RDS guise. It is inadequate in the following areas. One, the buffer for New York City's watershed. Prohibited drilling area distances and setbacks from our drinking water supplies are varied with exceptions and omissions. They should be the same without exceptions and omissions. The distances should be determined by a broad-based independent scientific study on the impacts of this process on our water and provide the greatest margin of safety. Two, there should be no horizontal drilling under our drinking water sources. Setback distances from our drinking water sources should be determined from the end of the horizontal wellbore. Three, the buffer for the New York City water infrastructure of a 1,000-foot corridor surrounding a water tunnel or aqueduct with a site-specific SEQR finding within 1,000 feet is grossly inadequate and dangerous for New York City's water supply. With the natural geological faults and fissures providing pathways for toxic-produced fluids to move up into aquifers over time and the force of the fracturing explosion to create new faults, it is imperative the seven-mile buffer from the end of the horizontal wellbore recommended in the Hazen and Sawyer final assessment report for New York City's DEP December 2009 be included to protect the adequate quantity and drinkability of New York City's drinking water and its fragile and aging water infrastructure. One major tunnel break will reduce the quantity of drinking water to New York City in 24 hours. Number four, no independent scientific study at the cumulative effects of high-density hydraulic fracturing on water has been done to inform the RDS guise. Since toxic chemicals are used in this process and the large quantities of produced fluids cannot be filtered to safe levels to enter our water systems, a moratorium should be placed on this process. Until the EPA has finished its study on the effects of this process on our water, until its study informs our state's RDS guise regulations and term of end.
Thank you very much. Donna Stein.
Hi, my name is Donna Stein. I'm the president of the New York City Friends Clearwater. I also participate in Occupy Environmental Work for Women. I consider myself an environmentalist. That means I care about the water, the air, the land, birds, fish, and humans, now and in the future. We take risks every day, and we can't take risks for millions of people. We can't play Russian roulette with people's lives. Putting hundreds of toxic chemicals into the ground in the process known as fracking has unacceptable risks. It already has been shown that people live in areas where it has passed, suffer from the effects of irreparably polluted water. Family farms, our industrial wastelands, private wells in people's backyards have noxious benzene and many other cancer-causing chemicals. The safety records of the companies involved are appalling. Even with regulations, it can't be made safe. There is no such thing as safe fracking. Anyone who says so is getting their stats from profiteers. As with anything, follow the money. This is a fragile earth we live on. We are so very lucky to have our natural aquifers that give us pure, clean water. We need to protect that now and into the future. Pay attention to the term "greenwashing" when something is made to look clean and safe. So-called "natural gas" from fracking is not natural nor clean. It may burn cleaner, but creates a much larger environmental destroying footprint in its production. No one, no corporation should have the right to risk our water, food, air. In places where the land, water, health, people, and animals have already been despoiled by this process, there should be penalties and there should be fines. And yes, jail time for those whose cover-up and willful disruption. This is supposed to be a government of the people, by the people, for the people. People who need clean water, safe food supply, clean air. Where is your legacy? Do you, decision-makers, want to be known for destroying your grandchildren's future? In the end, you will be judged not by the few jobs created but by the tremendous economic destruction, job losses, and lives fractured and destroyed.
The DSGS is flawed in so many ways that it is criminal to finalize it. Problems with the DSGS include: One, no adequate assessment of health impacts or comprehensive focused plan to analyze the cumulative impact of a full build-out of gas wells. Two, inadequate and unclear rules about fracking in floodplains and limited protection for primary aquifers. Three, although potentially contaminated with radiation, heavy metals, and chemicals banned in warfare by the Geneva War Conventions, fracking is not classified as hazardous. Fracking waste is not classified as hazardous. Four, tracking of fracked waste is left up to industry operators who have shown bad faith in Pennsylvania and elsewhere. For instance, 19 citizens in Dimmock, PA will lose their water deliveries today because Cabot denies it's responsible for the contamination and also falsely claims a methane filtration system is adequate to purify water contaminated with uranium, heavy metals, benzene, formaldehyde, bromide, and other deadly toxins. Five, although global climate change predicts an increase in dangerous storms like Hurricane Irene, open pits for storing fracking waste have not been outlawed. Six, the DSGS ignores that the rock under New York State, just as in Pennsylvania, is the oldest in the world. As such, it is brittle and full of pre-existing fissures and fractures making natural migration of contaminants in drinking water impossible to predict. Not surprisingly, 92 contaminated water wells in 60 square miles of Bradford County, PA have been documented since fracking came to town. Though industry claims fracking has brought 48,000 new jobs to Pennsylvania, using PA government numbers, the Keystone Research Center reports actual job recreation is closer to 10,000. With 50% of dairy farmers who have leased, no longer farming dairy, clearing many jobs as well as food sources are lost as well. Also, lending institutions such as Wells Fargo, GMAC Mortgage, First Place Bank, Providence Funding, Fannie Mae, and Freddie Mac prohibit dangerous industrial activities on residential properties. Last May, Troy Community Hospital in Bradford County, PA presented a report to the PA Marcellus Jail Advisory Commission stating significant increases in SDI infections, drug abuse, DWI, injuries from hazardous waste accidents, problems with uninsured patients, patients with GAB orders who misrepresent the situation, and other problems. Although industry continues to spout its miracle investment book, in fact, if New York Times reports this investment strategy is really a Ponzi scheme. New York State Controller Tom DiNapoli is so concerned that our pension funds, which are heavily invested in natural gas, may collapse if he has opened an investigation, as has the SEC. And in Bradford County, PA, only 18% of municipalities with drilling activities have said their tax revenues actually have increased because of drilling.
Thank you. Anne Lazarus.
To continue, I shall discuss some of these chemicals in a slightly, a little bit of detail. But there are 600-plus chemicals that can be used. Benzene is a known carcinogen. It can cause bone marrow failure, aplastic anemia, and leukemia. It can cause, at least at low levels, it causes drowsiness, dizziness, rapid heart rate, tremors, and more. In 1948, the American Petroleum Institute said, quote, "It is generally considered that the only absolutely safe concentration for benzene is zero," end of quote. Formaldehyde is a known carcinogen. Formaldehyde can cause myeloid leukemia, lymphatic cancer, and brain tumors. Short-term, it can cause irritation to the eyes, nose, and throat, initiate asthma, and cause immune system changes. It is flammable, corrosive, and can be used as a biocide. Glutaldehyde can cause occupational asthma, eyes, nose, throat irritation, including possible nosebleeds. It is toxic to fish and can terminate water. It is flammable. Ethylene glycol is an antifreeze, and it is a sweet-tasting poison. It gets into the environment from runoffs and accidents. Children and animals can be poisoned from ingestion. It can cause their nervous system damage and heart damage. If airborne, it breaks down in about 10 days. But in soil and water, it can take several days and few weeks. Methanol alcohol, used as an antifreeze and solvent, and it can cause permanent blindness if ingested, but it also can be absorbed through the skin, and it's very dangerous. Xylane encompasses three isomers of dimethyl benzene. It is a solvent. It causes headaches and loss of muscle control. Humans exposed to soil contamination from leaking underground storage tanks containing petroleum products, and it also can leak in the water. Methane is a potent greenhouse gas, and it is dangerous because it's extremely flammable and explosive, and it displaces oxygen in enclosed spaces in a similar manner as carbon monoxide and ethanol. Utoxyethanol can cause hemolysis with the breakdown of red blood cells. Dazemet is a soil fumigate. It is antimicrobial, and it can be volatile, and is acutely toxic to mammals and birds when exposed to the granules, but also can be airborne, and it is used as a biocide in fracking processes. Sand containing radioactive minerals is sometimes used as a traceant. And much of that sand, some of that sand is resin code. We don't know what these resins are. These are just a few of the chemicals used. The public has a right to know. All the chemicals, their proportions and formulations. The Marcellus has its own chemicals. Some of these toxic chemicals include natural gases such as hydrogen sulfide and radon. Hydrogen sulfide is flammable and explosive. It is found mixed in with the radon. It is a broad spectrum poisoning and severely damages the central nervous system. Radon is a radioactive gas. It is carcinogenic and causes lung cancer. It is associated with methane, and I don't know if this whole removal probably isn't. Other toxic metals include arsenic, mercury, millilithium, nickel, and chromium. I guess that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Lazarus. Thank you very much.